Just so you all know, at the very end, Michael Lynch is able to play Joshua's recorded statement. And so we'll have everybody else who's live speak first and then we'll have we'll have him play Joshua and then I'll make a closing comment, a couple of comments, okay? Which is mostly, mostly going to be to thank people who've been involved. It's going to be my closing comment.
And once again, to how, you know, sort of how many minutes are you kind of? I mean, I was figuring it's like six or seven minutes to do the slide, each slide, I mean, not each slide, but like it's two minutes on each slide probably.
I don't think mine will take all.
I don't think they'll take two minutes for each one. Some of them might take a little longer than others. But I don't, I don't think we want to I mean, I think I tried to pare it down so we didn't we could use less slides to cover certain things, but we can't cover every last detail in a webinar, right? Kathleen, you've been clear about not wanting to make this too long. So I think everybody just needs to be mindful of that, all the people who are speaking, right?
Okay.
And Cheryl, I was planning on, when I'm not speaking, I'm going to turn off my video and mute. Is that what others are doing?
Michael Lynch, for people who are viewing, are they only going to see the power, the screen and this actual speaker?
Yeah, so right now you can see the, your shared screen and they see you. So if you're on a PowerPoint and then someone else speaks, it'll go, you know, it'll switch to them. But it's just a little picture in the corner of who's speaking.
So Katie, you could keep it up if you want in terms of, because what's going to get recorded is just the screen and who's speaking? If I understand that correctly, Michael?
Yep.
That's the way it's working now. The only person you can see is the one speaking.
I can see others, but.
I can see others too. I think it depends on how you have it set up. Cheryl, I just noticed that Liz is in the attendees rather than the panelists.
Oh yeah, could you put Elizabeth Miller over in a panelist?
Yeah, do it right now.
Okay. Thanks, Katie.
Sure. Okay, I'm going to go unmute.
Okay, so I think if everybody could mute themselves and Katie, it won't be long before I'll be passing it over to you, so you can just be the first one ready. So, so Mike, tell me when we're good to go.
I'll sit at my end. You're good.
Thank you for tuning into this webinar, which is targeted for Milton residents and town meeting members. In July, the town meeting will consider an amendment for Milton Village. This amendment relates to our zoning bylaws. Today, a panel of speakers will orient you with the district, explain the goals and the details of the zoning. At the end, additional speakers will provide their thoughts. I am Cheryl Taggias, a member of the Planning Board and the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I am joined on the panel by Katie Conlin, a member of the Select Board, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and the Housing Committee. Also by Kathleen O'Donnell, a member of the Planning Board and a member of the Housing Committee. And lastly, by Dick Burke, a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. As times change, our community needs change too. And we should look at our zoning to see if it can be updated to ensure that our vision for the town and the needs of its residents are met. The Milton Village Mixed-Use Plan Unit Development zoning proposal is a tool to guide development in Milton Village. The Planning Board is the municipal body with the authority to initiate an amendment to the local zoning. And the Planning Board is required to hold public hearings on amendments and then it must submit its amendment to the Select Board, who must choose to include it in the Town Meeting warrant. Then the Warrant Committee reviews the articles and makes recommendations to Town Meeting. So all of those steps have already occurred and we are getting close to the next step, which is the consideration of the article for Town Meeting. And that will be done on July 28th of this year. If the zoning is adopted, the next step would be for the Attorney General to review the language and then it could be put into effect. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Katie Conlin.
Thank you, Cheryl. So the next several slides are going to show us the area of town that we're talking about and we're going to have a drone overflight of the area, as well as some development that has already occurred within this business district and in a nearby business district. As you can see that the, the area includes, before we start the drone, the area includes several historic buildings, including some of the Baker Chocolate Buildings, access to our only waterfront area, which is our riverfront at Wharf Street. It also includes the High Street residences and businesses and Adams Street, High Street, Adams Street and Wharf are really the principal streets involved here, as well as a very small piece of Canton Avenue and Elliott Street. Okay, we're going to now go to a drone overflight that will show us beginning, looking north towards the city over Adams Street. So we'll start the video.
Which doesn't want to start.
Well, we're trying to get it to start. I'll just point out a few things in this slide. As you can see, we have we have a, on the left side is Adams Street. There are a couple of residences that are shown there, as well as some businesses. On the right-hand side, beyond the trees and the intersection, is the Masonic Building, which is an historic building. Looking north, we also have in the distance, the Bank of America branch and One Elliott. We're going to have a speaker who is the owner of One Elliott later on in the presentation today. We're still having a little trouble getting the video going.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's not starting, even though it doesn't start here.
That's too bad. All right. Let me also point out, you'll see in the center of the intersection, there's a block the box painting on the street. We'll see that again in a subsequent slide. That is something that has been done recently. And there's also two spaces, parking spaces that have been removed from Adams Street, right below it on the screen, looking north. Those are improvements to the area that have come out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee's planning process in order to address some of the needs, traffic-related needs that have been brought to us by residents. Yeah, in this slide, well, you'll see we have a lot of properties that are owned by parties that are interested in trying to do something creative with their properties in the area of mixed use, who are have been following our process. Some of them have met with the committee or with the Planning Board and have expressed an interest in this mixed-use zoning. Okay, why don't we go on to the next slide then? This is a view of Adams Street and Milton Village in the early 20th century. The Masonic building is on our right. Across the street from it to the left is a building that was destroyed by fire and is the site approximately of the Citizens Bank Drive-Thru Branch. And you can see in the distance, the Bank Building and One Elliott Street. There are a lot of large shade trees also in this picture. And then we'll go on to this next view, which is from the 1950s or 60s, mid-20th century. Some things to note are the Masonic Building, of course, is still there as it is today. On the left-hand side of our screen, we have several more businesses and a gas station. There's a Citgo gas station, as well as a grocery and liquor store. And you can see the top of the Bank of America building. There's also fewer street trees on the sidewalks. Next, we have a slide showing the current state of Milton Village. We've also added to this slide some markings showing the number of stories and feet. So at its highest point, the Masonic Building, on the far right, there is three stories and 45 feet. And further back is a 50-foot portion of the building. Across the street on, which is Adams Street, but the back of that, those properties would be High Street. And there is a topography difference that we'll get to shortly, that unfortunately our drone video would have shown a little bit better detail. But on the left-hand side, we have a building that is 45 feet and three stories. This slide shows us the boundaries of the Milton Village Business District. As you can see, as I said, it picks up the waterfront area down at the landing. ADA Wharf Street was built in this district. It also includes the extra space storage parcel and the area that we use for the farmer's market. And then we have residences and businesses on High Street and Adams Street, which are part of the business district, even though there are some residential homes in that neighborhood. The next slide shows us some information regarding the current zoning that's in place for the business district. So currently, as of today, some of the allowed uses are parking facilities, gas stations, even though we no longer have one in the district, vehicle repair shops. We do have a storage facility, laundry banks, shops, offices, restaurants, gyms, and some single-family homes. So all of these are permitted in the district. It is also possible by special permit for medical marijuana to be, to be permitted for that district, or also some sexually-oriented businesses. So there are, there are uses already existing for the district that are purely business, but do not allow for mixed use, meaning combined residential and commercial. And as you'll see on the column on the right, the maximum height that's currently allowed is a three-story building, five-story by a special permit, and a 45-foot structure with a special permit allowable up to 65 feet. There are no affordable housing requirements in the current zoning for the district. And parking spaces are, you need one for each 250 square feet of space. You would need one parking space. Again, this is the current zoning. This is not what we're proposing. We're proposing to add an overlay or mixed-use zoning on top of this zoning as an alternative to the current business zoning. So what is mixed-use zoning? There are some graphics that show it's a combination of people living and working or shopping or dining, retail establishments in the same buildings. So the zoning that we are proposing would require a developer to combine multifamily residential and business uses. Our goal here is to improve the district, to make it more dynamic and to provide some opportunities for walkability, social interaction, more affordable housing, that's efficient and sustainable. And we do have a need for affordable housing in our town, throughout our town, as we're going to hear later in the program from Melinda Collins of the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board. We're going to point out three properties that are developed, have been developed or are being developed recently. Two of them in the Central Avenue District and one of them in the Milton Village District. The first slide here is 36 Central Ave., which was built in 2008. It has 18 residential condominiums and three commercial condominiums. There are two affordable units in this building. It's four stories, total of 46 feet. And the parking requirements for this property are one parking space per 1,000 square feet or one bedroom. 131 Elliott Street is under construction. The drawing that you see here is the architect's rendering that was provided to the Planning Board when the project was permitted a few years ago. It's under construction at the present time. The Henry's Development would include approximately 43,000 square foot lot size and 59,000 square feet of total building area. There will be 38 residential units, including four affordable units and one commercial unit. Henry's property will be between four and five stories at different places in the structure and 49 feet maximum. Again, the, this both the Henry's Building and the 36th Central Avenue are built under the Central Avenue Planned Use, Planned Unit Development. And that had a certain minimum lot size requirements, which are larger than what's proposed for Milton Village, because Milton Village includes some much smaller properties. So the minimum lot size in that zoning was 20,000 square feet. And our third mixed-use development is the ADA Wharf Project, which is 73 residential units, including three commercial units, which includes a restaurant and a medical office building, a medical office unit, rather. ADA Wharf is 65 units, I'm sorry, 73 units, but six stories and 65 feet tall. So it is one of the larger structures. And the topography is a factor. The ADA Wharf is built at a lower lower part of the district than some of the other properties. High Street is more of an elevation than Adams Street, which is at a higher elevation than Wharf Street. So this is a little bit unique in that the minimum lot size for the particular Milton Village Central Avenue business the U D zoning was 80,000 square feet. And again, what we're looking to do is put in a mixed-use proposal that would apply to smaller properties than an 80,000-square-foot property. So I am now going to turn the program over to Kathleen O'Donnell. Kathleen?
Thank you, Katie. I hope I'm showing up. So just to sort of, as a history discussion, Milton Village has been settled since the 1600s and, and actually, the first grist mill in the country, the United States, was actually constructed right here on the banks of the deposit. So it has a long, long history of, of mixed use, mostly commercial and industrial use rather than residential. And so, but when zoning was adopted in 1938 in Milton, probably the buildings that we love the most that are in this district wouldn't comply with current zoning. The Webb Mill, as we saw in this picture, is done, has very little parking. The Mason Building, Cheryl will have a later slide, which will talk about what the what the parking requirements under the existing zoning in the business district would require for that building if it was being built today. Just a substantial garage. So we just wanted to point out the fact that many of the things that we're trying to save there in this village and save the appearance of, wouldn't comply with current zoning. And zoning is obviously, as Cheryl had mentioned too, is designed to regulate the use and the construction of buildings. And so it's supposed to be establishing uses that are doing the best they can to not conflict with other uses in the same area and also to make sure that we're protecting the health and safety of the residents. A zoning has gone on since the 1920s. The, the idea about what zoning can regulate has also expanded to now include things like climate change and, you know, sustainability, all kinds of things that are now issues before us. And so what we've tried to address with this overlay district is a way to update the zoning to reflect the aims and goals that we now have. I mean, it's interesting to point out that when zoning first started in the 1920s is also when the first zoning lawsuit started. So in 1926. So what the current uses in this building, in this district, as Katie mentioned, car dealerships, repair shops, garages, gas stations and warehouses are the things that are allowed. There is no mention of any multifamily housing. There's, it's not that it's prohibited, it's actually not even, not even listed. Multifamily housing, for the most part, isn't allowed in Milton, in the town at all, especially not in this district. There is no, since there's no provision for multifamily housing, there's no provision for affordable housing. And so what we're now trying to do, as I said, is the way to sort of feed into the aims and goals that were proposed under the master plan, to sort of look at ways to encourage more retail, dining options, more housing types. Everyone talks about the fact that we need more and different kinds of housing for different kinds of residents. Single people, older people, downsizing, upsizing, all kinds of things. We don't have, and we'd like to encourage that. Affordable housing, obviously, as we know that we have four, I think, applications pending possibly for 40B projects in the town. In my experience in the housing business, once a town shows up on the radar for availability for affordable housing, not having its 10%, it stays on the radar. And so that's something that we have told DHCD that we would like to encourage our own kind of idea of, of affordable housing and directed in the way that best serves our town. And lastly, we have a way with this overlay district to improve the district with park, with trees, better access for the kayaking into the waterfront, maybe better support for the farmer's market, way to improve the streetscape, to improve the access to our fabulous bike path. All of those kinds of things are ways to sort of, we're looking at developers to provide funds for incentive funds. And that's another article that's on the Town Meeting Warrant, which is going to create these, these funds for, for our, for our projects. We've skipped a slide, I think, or maybe I just, oh, that's right. So what we're looking at is, this is a slide explaining the affordability challenges, which as we all know are pretty tight. Housing is expensive in this town. And so the idea to provide some ability for affordable housing in this area, this is going to be located near transit, it's on bus lines, it's on a bike path. It is a great location for affordable housing and, and a great way to provide some diversity in our housing stock. Next slide. And so looking at this, the Milton Village, you know, is sort of to an idea, this mixed-use zoning is going back to what Milton Village probably looked like when it was first settled in the 16, 1700s, where you would have had tradesmen with their shops on the first floor and living upstairs. It's a classic way that downtowns were developed all throughout New England. And what we are trying to do with this overlay district is to to get back to that idea. So enhancing the character, we'd like to set up a way to have this district ready for the, the new state programs that are being proposed by Governor Baker as part of the economic stimulus payment programs after the COVID epidemic. Governor Baker has a bill that he hopes to get through the general court before the end of its session in July that is going to be establishing all kinds of funds for housing opportunities, development opportunities. And we'd like to have this district ready to go. It would increase the affordability and size of housing types pursuant to our housing production plan. And it would also hopefully strengthen our, strengthen our tax base. Those of you who listen to Town Meeting or attending Town Meeting, you know that additional revenue from commercial uses is something that we were really looking at to sort of ease the burden on the residents of the town. And so that's why we think this is a perfect opportunity to get some of those goals achieved with affordable housing, preserving the history of that area, and also making sure that we can hopefully improve our tax base. And then we are looking at this overlay district and how it was developed. It's a long time and Cheryl deserves a ton of credit for working so hard on this for the last three years. It just says three, but I'm probably, there's probably four or five more years before that even, this timeline even starts. So we've been having meetings at the Planning Board since October, talking about the draft of this, of the zoning bylaw. We've gotten a lot of input from a former Chair of the Planning Board, Alex Whiteside, which has been very helpful. And we've also gotten a lot of input from the Historic Commission and from the Housing Committee to sort of help us you know, design the, the zoning in this overlay district. And we really appreciate the efforts that have been put in by all these boards and committees to help get this zoning developed. And I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Well, thank you. I'm trying to advance this and it's not working. There we go. Thank you, Kathleen. So on this slide, I think it's interesting graphic on the left, which really looks at use segregation as a, as a reason or in a byproduct of that use segregation is that we are, we've become dependent upon our cars. And that dependency upon our cars has ramifications in a lot of ways for our affordability, for our access to services, and even for the viability of our historic district. So when we look at mixing our uses, we can look at reducing our distances that we have to go between where we work and where we live and where we go for our leisure activities. And so we were trying to think about how these things all relate to one another. And this notion of going back to a mixed-use district and allowing that to be something in Milton Village seemed, as Kathleen said earlier, just a really smart idea. And in doing that, we could also look at how we can address some of our housing needs and particularly our affordable housing needs. So this overlay requires multifamily above first-floor business. We want to keep vitality at the street level so that we can have coffee shops and other places to meet up with our neighbors where we can have access to goods and services. We also want to require in those housing units up above that 12% of them be affordable and count towards our subsidized housing inventory. And that subsidized housing inventory relates to the Chapter 40B requirements. And that is that 10% of Milton's housing stock, as every community in Massachusetts is really required to have 10% of our housing stock be affordable and on that inventory. And Milton today is just shy of 5%. So the, I'm going to go over the key provisions of the zoning. And there's a number of them that help us control scale. There's a lot of concern about, will new development take over Milton Village and will we lose the character that it has today? And some of that character is defined by smaller properties and smaller structures. So the tools that we have in this zoning that control scale are our height limits. So we have a baseline height limit of three stories and 37 feet. And just for reference, all single-family zones in Milton currently allow two and a half stories and 35 feet. So we're really looking at something pretty consistent with all of our residential districts. This is lower than the baseline business district existing zoning. And then another tool for the scale is a setback. So where the building is located on the property. So in this zoning, we're proposing six feet away from the property lines on the sides, 12 feet at the rear, and then in particular on Canton Avenue, a 10-to-15 foot setback along Canton Avenue to address scale on Canton Avenue. And there are just two properties within the district that face Canton Avenue. And then another tool is our lot coverage maximum. So that's really just the footprint of the building as a percentage of its lot size. There's no requirement in the current zoning for that, and we would put that at 60%. And we'll go through this in more detail with some examples in a few minutes. And then lastly, on, on these tools for scale is what's called the Floor Area Ratio, or FAR. And that simply is to take your lot size times this FAR number, and that tells you how big your building can be. And we'll go into some of that in a moment as well. Another important feature of this zoning is that it incorporates design standards. So these design standards set out characteristics of the district and requires them to be imported into new design. And we'll go into some of that and some examples of that shortly. The goal of the Planning Board, should this zoning be adopted, would be to augment those design standards with design guidelines. And I know, we know that the Historical Commission is interested in development of those design guidelines as well. Those guidelines would help development teams in proposing their designs and would help Planning Boards in reviewing proposed projects. And then another key factor or key component of this overlay zoning is that it includes bonus incentive of one additional floor to go to four stories and 48 feet for properties on Adams Street only. And these would be for historic preservation, public improvement, and increased affordability. And these would be for historic preservation, public improvement, and increased affordable housing. Now, I want to show you how, a little bit how we arrived at some of these numbers, if you will, or these criteria. So we took a look at a building, I think, that everyone's familiar with, that's known as the Masonic Building to some. It's the 50 to 64 Adams Street building, built up, I think, in the late 1800s. And if we take a look at that image on the right, which is looking from up above, you can see the footprint of that building, so the roof of that building. And that is, has a lot coverage of 54%. And so our 60% is, has taken the kind of account that this existing building successfully doesn't take up its entire footprint and has a reasonable amount of open space that could be used for parking or other uses. And we felt that that was a good percentage to use in this proposed overlay. The other thing we looked at here is how big is the building relative to the property that it's on? And that is that floor area ratio or FAR, and this has 1.63. So we targeted 1.65 based on this analysis. And then on height, this building is three stories on Adams Street, but it drops to four at the rear because of the change in topography that Katie mentioned. There's significant change of topography in a couple of directions here in Milton Village. And so the building varies in height from 35 feet to 50 feet on Adams Street and as high as 60 feet at the rear. So if you look at how some of those dimensional requirements work, we can use this example of 59 Adams Street, and you can see the aerial of it on the right. And you can see this is the citizens' kiosk location. So those orange lines are the property lines. And the purple lines would be the required setback. So you can see if Adams Street's the front, you're setback six feet from the sides and 12 feet from the rear. In this case, that would be High Street. But you can't build your foot, the building at that footprint because you would exceed the lot coverage that our requirements have. So in the blue area is the 60% lot coverage. So another example would be the 5 Canton Avenue property. And I mentioned that we have a specific requirement for the two properties that are along Canton Avenue here. And it has to do with scale rising up the hill into that intersection. And again, you can see the existing building and the roof of it on the right. And you can, on the left, the diagram would show the orange line to the property line, the purple lines, the setback lines, and then the pink lines would be the lot coverage. The existing building's lot coverage obviously is a lot smaller than what would be allowed under the zoning, but so is this building overall. And height, if we take a look at height, Katie mentioned the topographic difference. So this is a section through the land, if you will, where you can see Adams Street towards the right and High Street towards the left. And you can see the 50 to 64 Adams Street in green on the right, that's the Masonic Building. And you can see that it's marked there at a height of 53 feet 6 inches, and that's at the tallest point towards the end. And then what you can see here is that in the gray lines, the solid gray lines are what would be allowed in the business, the current business district zoning. And that would, those heights are by the special permit. And then the line just below that, kind of a teal color, would be the baseline allowed under the current business zoning. So what we're proposing is a, overall is a, in this overlay would be less height overall, and in particular, less height on High Street. You can see that orange line on High Street compared to that gray line on High Street. We heard a lot of concerns about scale of buildings that might be allowed to be built on High Street. And these dimensional requirements have been designed to take those concerns into consideration and to allow for less overall building on High Street than on Adams Street. Another example of how these heights relate to the existing aspects of the district. This is a building on High Street, I mean, on Adams Street rather, 65 to 71 Adams Street. And you can see that the current, that existing historic building is about the same height as what is allowed under this proposed overlay, 37 feet and then up to 48 feet. So 48 is a little higher than this building, but not substantially so. And then again, at the top, this is an elevation of Adams Street, looking towards the west side of it. And you can see the heights of the existing buildings. And then the purple line shows the heights that would be allowed under this zoning. Particular concern for many who came to speak to us was the height of buildings as it rounded the corner at 5 Canton Avenue. So this diagram shows due to the topography rising in two directions, what is 45 feet measured at the midpoint of the property on Adams Street, same height of building turns out to be about 36 feet by the time it gets to High Street. And so the building is, can be seen to address the scale of both sides, Adams Street and High Street, just due to the topographic changes. Also point out that there, that the, because of the shape of the property and the setback requirement there, that the modulation of this building would be required as it wraps the corner. So I mentioned modulation. The design, the design standards get into how you can take the scale, the overall square footage of the building and begin to have it be modulated and respond to its context. So there's requirements for having the building step back at certain points so that you don't have a long uninterrupted facade and that you have to step back from historic properties that are of smaller scale. And so this is a diagram that shows how those requirements could be used to address those scale difference on Adams Street and also on High Street. So these examples would be helpful to applicants looking to design their properties to fit this zoning and for planning board in looking at applications to make sure that they're compliant. But they're purely examples, and there could be many other ways to utilize the standards. Now, we have a animation of how, of taking a look at how these standards could be built out, comparing them to the, what could be built under the current business zoning and also comparing it to what exists today. So what you see on your screen now is what exists today. And with any luck, this animation will actually work this time. So there's the business, the mixed use, another angle, business and mixed use, and that will continue with multiple views. So we, we believe, having tested these tools and these requirements, that we can we can have successful redevelopment that can relate to the scale of the existing buildings in this district. So I'll now talk a little bit about the approval process because it's an important distinction between what the process is today. So in the business district, there's a process called site plan approval. And the planning board has really limited criteria that we can use in approving projects under this process. And it's not nearly as rigorous a process as the special permit process, which is used in other overlay districts in town. So what does that mean, the special permit? We have discretion, the planning board actually has discretion. We can deny projects that we feel don't meet the requirements and the standards set out in the zoning. We also have discretion in granting that additional story in return for the public benefits that we've talked about. Before we make any decisions about approvals, we must hold a public hearing. And that public hearing can last over many meetings and over many months if necessary. And it would include public engagement. So the process provides for better protections for community input into this redevelopment. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dick, who will talk about parking and traffic. Unmute Dick.
Thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about one of my favorite subjects, which is parking requirements. As part of, one of the things I was also involved with besides the MPIC processes, I was also on the traffic mitigation chameleon. Every meeting that we had, we talked about two things, as you can imagine, traffic, but also parking and the impact it has on the town of Milton. One of the ideas that we, we came about with the, through this process was to reduce the number of parking spaces required, allowing parking to be located offsite within the district. The reduction would require a one space for every 1,000 square foot of businesses and one space for every residential unit, regardless of size. This may be sound counterintuitive to some people that the idea is more, more parking is better. But I think as we go through a couple of these slides, we'll give you, if we don't convince you, that's not the case, we'll give you some food for thought. Currently, existing public parking in the Milton Village District, there's 102 on-street spaces in the district. And according to one of our traffic and parking engineers who took a survey, 66% of these are used during the weekday. One of the nice things about Milton Village is it sort of fits into the whole smart growth proposal that's put, that's put forth by Governor, Governor, Governor Baker. And what we, what we talked about is one of the things, one of the advantages is pub, public transit. We have bike, bicycle facilities and walkability from Milton Village. Increasingly, more and more people are working from home. This is, this is the new, the new normal. This was happening before the pandemic, and I think most people will agree that this, this will move forward. And as a result, there isn't quite a need to have that automobile, but there may be a need for, for taking public transportation, which Milton Village affords some, potentially some of these new residents. Too much parking is an issue. It encourages people to drive into a district, and that's one of the things we're trying to, trying to work, work against. And I think that's something that we're trying to address by reducing the number of residential parking spots. And also, another offshoot of this, it makes it very expensive, expensive for a developer, which pushes up the cost of housing. And that's something that really sort of flies in the face of some of the, some of the comments we've heard from the master plan committee, on the committee. As I go to the next slide, if we took the Masonic Building as an example, if someone were to develop that into a commercial entity, they would need, under current zoning, 103 parking spaces. Currently, they have 16, 16 spaces. Under the proposed overlay zoning, they would need 26 spaces required, which I think would be a real additional impetus for the, for a developer, the current owner or a developer to redevelop that piece of, piece of property. I think most of us would, would, you know, right now, I think it's, it's, it's known that, you know, right now you could build a garage in Milton Village. And I don't think that really, really seems to fit, fit the plan of a number, a number of the residents that we've heard from in terms of what would they like to see, see happen down in the, in the village. As we go to the next slide, excess parking has real consequences. As we talked about, the more expensive it is for developer, the more expensive the housing units. More, more spaces means more vehicles, increasing traffic. We don't have the data that really, really allows us to, to support more parking. We're talking, many, many residents have told us they're using alternate transportation. Ride hailing is a, is a thing that's with us now and will be in the future. Bike sharing and car sharing are things I think that more and more people will be, will be utilizing going forward. One of the things that we're seeing is that because of the cost, the general cost of housing in the greater Boston area, it becomes very difficult for people to pay for their housing and also pay for the cost of an automobile. But they'll, but so they're looking for alternative ways of getting to and from work or to and, to and from things that they like to do. Well, as it says, says in this, in this presentation, more spaces attracts more car owning households. And according to our traffic consultant, residential parking minimums of one space per dwelling units are acceptable. Business space, parking minimums of one space per everyday, 1,000 square foot of gross floor areas are also acceptable. Service owned parking should be evaluated to ensure that employees of any proposed business use have adequate parking. On our build out analysis that was done by Bader, which was one of our consultants, it's, it's an interesting thing that I didn't realize until we actually sat down through the, through the process, that residential use has less traffic impacts than commercial. And if you think about Milton Village or even East Milton Square, but if we focus on Milton Village, think about the amount of traffic that is generated by the post office in Milton Village. Years ago, we, we talked about when, when we looked at the, the, I think it was probably in the 40s, there was an old Jenny Station was converted into a Citgo Station that generated a tremendous amount of traffic in Milton Village. And now it's, now it's been, that its place is being taken, taken over by a Citizens Bank kiosk, which by design generates traffic. So, you know, we're trying to think of other ways of accommodating some of the needs that people want to see, see in the town. The level of service and intersections has not changed with build out. And the slight increase in queue lengths for the full build out is really, really something we can talk about as we get into the weeds on this thing. But one of, one of the, one of the ideas as, as we were trying to meet, meet, meet the needs of Milton Village and the town of Milton as generated by ideas in the master plan, we're, we're looking at increased development. I mean, there are, there are four or five things that came out in the master plan that, that, that I think this plan addresses. One is to expand housing options, including affordable housing, to revitalize the business districts, optimizing tax revenues, as Kathleen had mentioned, and maintain the historical nature of Milton. If you take a look at the, the kiosk owned by Citizens Bank, currently, that kiosk generates $13,000 in tax revenues. If that would be developed under the guidelines that we, that we are proposing, we could see something in the, in the range, according to the, according to the square footage, or maybe four commercial units and as many as 12 to 14 condominiums. That alone would generate over $100,000 in revenue, gross revenues, net to the town, $87,000. That's something we really have to take a real hard look about as we, as we, as we talk about asking more people to pay more money in taxes for some of the legitimate needs that the town is putting forth. So I think in terms of what's, what's being proposed is a perfect no. Is it something that, that is, is certainly worth, worth of consideration? Absolutely. What we had in the past and was identified by a former planning board member is we had zoning that really didn't work. There was no demand for our commercial, but there was demand for retail. We have, we're trying to put a combination of the two together and see if we can really, really do something to invigorate one of the gateways of the town of Milton.
Thank you, Dick. Before we get on to our next slide and the, and the speakers who are going to speak next, I do want to emphasize that we can actually plan for the development that Milton needs and that residents desire. Milton, in practice, in the past, has waited for developers to come to us with a proposal for what they'd like to build. This is our opportunity to tell developers, this is this is what we'd like to see in this part of Milton. And please come forward with your development proposals that meet and will help us meet these goals. And now my computer is stuck. There we go. Okay, so at this point, we have a number of speakers who are going to give us their thoughts about this overlay zoning. And we're going to take them in the order, in somewhat a little bit of the order that's on the screen. So I'm going to introduce all of them first, and then I think what we can do, I'll say them in order, then as each speaker finishes, they can turn it over to the next one, okay? So first, we'll have Melinda Collins, who is the select board chair of the Housing Committee and also the Board now. She's also the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Then we'll go to Liz Miller, who's a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and then to Taber Keely, who's also a member of that committee. We'll then go to Michael Roberts, who's a property owner of 98 102 Adams Street, which includes the Swift Hat Building. Then we'll go to Allison Quinn, our Assistant Town Planner. And then we have a message from Joshua Wild that will be included, and he's the property owner of 1 Elliott 1 Adams Street. So with that, I will turn it over to Melinda.
Melinda, you need to unmute.
Bye. Thank you, Katie. I just wanted to say that Julie Kramer is actually the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you for inviting me to speak. Housing is a fundamental human necessity. No person can lead a stable, healthy, productive life without housing. And each human life contributes to the stability, health, and productivity of a community. Therefore, housing development has very real implications for social cohesion, community health outcomes, and civic and economic vitality. The town's master plan and 2020 housing production plan include strategies the town believes will create the most successful housing for the community and its families and individuals, present and future. This zoning can help us meet our needs and manifest our values to create a diverse community we can all enjoy, benefit from, and be proud to call home. The trustees and Housing Committee worked with the Planning Board to develop features of the zoning overlay related to housing affordability, and I urge you to support the passage of the Milton Village PUD. Redevelopment is already occurring in Milton. Our current zoning bylaws are rooted in Depression-era and post-World War II federal economic policy that reoriented life toward car dependence, single-family homes, ever-increasing consumption of resources, and the apportionment of opportunity, health, and safety according to zip code. Therefore, as in cities and towns across the United States, Milton's zoning bylaws largely codify unequal access to housing, transportation, education, jobs, health, and other social goods. Today, planners and developers are trying to respond to current needs, values, and best practices with outdated exclusionary zoning that restricts full and free access by all people to common goods. Over time, and as the population of our region has grown, production of small-scale multifamily housing that integrates well into existing neighborhoods has not kept pace due to these exclusionary zoning codes. Moreover, from the 1920s through the 1980s, municipalities, including Milton, have ratcheted down housing flexibility in single-family zones through bylaws restricting the creation of accessory dwelling units, duplexes, small apartment buildings, and corner stores, along with excessive parking requirements that Dick was just talking about, that reinforce car dependence and transportation inequities, which in turn limit access to employment. In fact, in 100 Massachusetts cities and towns surveyed by Amy Dane for the 2018 study entitled "The State of Zoning for Accessory Dwelling Units", multifamily units comprised only 14% of housing units. And in Milton, we need only look at our 0% vacancy rates to understand the severity of need for housing in our community. As we now understand, homeownership drives the creation of wealth through access to education and capital. Housing prices that are so high at this point also prevent renting households from accumulating wealth because overly restrictive zoning, such as large lot sizes, increase the cost of land and impedes the creation of multifamily housing. This results in rental costs that burden low and moderate-income households, causing them to make choices that negatively affect their family's education, health, and welfare, concerns that we too often erroneously label as being completely in an individual's control, rather than the product of forces such as systemic and institutional racism and inequities. For instance, low and moderate-income earners and their families must often move farther away from jobs and therefore sacrifice the opportunity for upward mobility. This zoning would provide better access to transportation and indispensable services such as accessibility to food. In addition, this zoning offers an affordable entry to homeownership for young families and can also be a good fit for older people downsizing. By planning proactively with this zoning, we can shape the development to create the diversity of housing needs at a scale that does not burden the community with oversized projects and allow for other public benefits, such as historic preservation and infrastructure funding. Regulating land use for health and efficient use of resources is important. At the same time, Milton is part of a regional economic and housing market. Every municipality benefits from and has responsibility to the economic and social health of its region. The Commonwealth's lack of regional planning confers a greater responsibility upon municipalities. Choosing not to step up to this responsibility comes at a great cost to our own community in the form of inflated home prices, higher property taxes, lower regional and national GDP, lost workers, pollution, traffic, and social inequity. We are an incredibly talented and caring citizenry. We can and must step up by passing this zoning to allow for mixed-income development, to house the workers, young professionals, and elders living on fixed incomes, so that they can continue to live in Milton and help build a bright future for our town. Thank you for listening. And now Liz, if you would like to speak next.
I will, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My perspective on the overlay zoning is two-part. One, as a resident living within walking distance of Milton Village; and second, as a part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. First, my family, we have two elementary school children. We've lived in Milton for nine years, and we've truly enjoyed what the town has to offer, from the accessibility to the T. For nine years, we've only used one car as a family of four, and it's proximity to Blue Hills and open green spaces, which, as we all know, draws many young families. Our town is changing, though, some by the force of developers and some by our community looking to improve upon what great foundation we already have here in Milton. I support the overlay as a way to move our town forward without losing the atmosphere we all enjoy. This overlay gives us more control over the change, be it external or internal, that's at our doorstep. It provides more protection for historic properties without blocking further protection being added in the future. It'll provide opportunities for more local amenities and places for people younger and older to meet, while also bringing in much-needed tax revenue. It'll also importantly provide opportunities for small-scale housing, partly affordable, again, mixing people of different ages and working towards keeping larger 40B developments at bay. My perspective is also as part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I've been part of this discussion from the beginning, hearing many voices at our 40 public meetings and numerous committee meetings over three years. It's been a long road to get to this point, and I believe that there's been ample time and opportunity for residents to review, discuss, and comment on the zoning. We've heard from many people, which is a success of this overlay and this process. We've also importantly taken all of those comments, weighed them, discussed them at length, and worked to incorporate them into the many revisions of the zoning as it's worked its way from our committee to the planning board and out to town meeting. Our committee has engaged with town approval outside professional input in this zoning, including resident-requested traffic reports, as you saw in the presentation. This has been a well-discussed, researched, and professional path to this point. We're also doing this presentation as a way to continue our outreach to inform the people of Milton with the zoning means and make sure that you all know the great extent to which it's been worked on, developed, and is ready for implementation. Our role at the Master Plan Implementation Committee, MPIC, you might have heard people say, is to implement what people asked for in the master plan. As you saw in this presentation, people asked for lively town centers, housing options, historical preservation, and opportunities for mixed age groups and diverse groups, all of which this zoning provides. Both as a resident living near the village and as part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I support this overlay zoning. Development and change are not always a bad thing for our town, and this overlay will provide us with more tools to manage and have a say in that change. So now, Taber is next.
Thanks, Liz. So going last or near the last means that most everything's already been said. But I would like to echo all the comments said before and tell you a little bit about how I got here. I moved into town in 1985, and I too was a one-car family. We lived on Elliott Street and right next to the T, and that worked very well. I now live on the other side of town, it does not work so well. So we are a multiple-car family. I do miss those days, and I do miss the entire Lower Mills area. At one point, I was a member of the Central Ave Revitalization Committee, and we tried desperately to get things going. But the zoning has been an impediment to further development. The zoning dates to 1938, and I can't speak for that time, but I'm sure it was adequate for what it was designed for. But, you know, 82 years is a long time ago, and we've come a long way in many regards. It's not just public transportation and all technology, the things that we do with the way of life. It does not, that zoning does not accommodate us any longer. It now inhibits the further development of the area. And the revitalization of the Lower Mills area has started to occur. It's just occurring in Boston, it's not occurring in Milton, and we are missing that boat. Development overall is market-driven. Developers are not looking to do a lot of hard work, they want to do the easy stuff. And when they're handed a set of rules, the way 1938 zoning, which does not allow most of what the other side of the river does allow, it's just easier to go elsewhere. Everything that was discussed earlier, from the mixed use to parking, et cetera, no mixed use made a lot of sense when your commercial uses down there were somewhat noxious. You had a coal wharf. Even though making chocolate sounds delicious, it didn't smell all that great when you were living on top of it. Parking was an issue when people didn't follow the rules. Now, with the change in most of the city, the one car, one parking space per unit is certainly adequate. And that's what I think we need to be going toward a market-driven zoning because the developers are going to go there anyway. If we don't design something that the developers can do, they're going to come in and with a 40B, for the purpose of it, they're going to design what they want, and we will have a lot less to say about it. Our input in the 40B process is marginal in comparison. If we can get ahead of that and jump on the mixed use, allow that, and also allow a much smaller scale to it, we'll get what we want. If we don't allow the development committee to come in and design what they want, we're going to end up with something that's very likely out of scale and may not meet all of our needs. This MPIC, or the Master Plan Implementation Committee that I've been on, has been working through this for the longest time, and it isn't easy. It's a lot, what they say about making sausage, it hasn't been pretty. A lot of you people that may be listening to this have missed out on many of our other presentations and haven't had an opportunity to weigh in. And I would say that this is the final act here where you can actually do something for that part of town, for your tax base, for the social equity within the community. You know, Boston is not often seen as a leader, but boy, are they way ahead of us. And we are in, I think, a position where if we don't move ahead, we're going to be taken over by a development process that we have very little control. This is probably one of our last opportunities to really have a good say in what we want this area to look like. And I would say that the Lower Mills area has come a long way with the addition of some of the Central Ave development with the restaurants and other commercial aspects. But it's not going to go much further without our help. And this is your opportunity to really add to that. So with that, I'll conclude, and I'm sorry to say I don't, I missed Cheryl's comment, and I'm not so sure who comes next.
Thank you, Taber. It's Michael Roberts is next.
Hi, my name is Michael Roberts. I live at 100 Adams Street in Milton Village. I've lived in Adams Village for about, Milton Village, for the past 14 years. Before that, I lived on Herrick Drive, basically from the time the neighborhood was built in the late 1980s. I'm a parent of three children, all of whom attended the Milton Public Schools from kindergarten through graduation from high school. I coached Little League Soccer, and when my children were young, I volunteered my time to the town in many capacities. I'm a past member of the Milton Village and Central Avenue Light taper, Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, that goes back a long way. And I'm the past chairman of the town's Technology Committee, where we were successful in helping the town migrate from antiquated telephone technology and an obsolete accounting system to modern and expandable systems that could be adapted for the changing requirements of the town. We also helped lay the foundation for hiring the first technology director in the school system. As a resident of Milton, I've been active in a number of efforts to update Milton zoning bylaws and to accommodate the changing nature of work and to create opportunities to improve the town through thoughtful and careful planning and development. My first experience with the need to change Milton zoning bylaws occurred after I purchased the parking lot where 36 Central Avenue now sits in the mid-1990s. The parking lot was zoned commercial, and I was successful in permitting a small office building on the site. The problem I ran into, and the problem that exposed the deficits in the Milton zoning bylaws, was that after a year, I was unable to find a tenant for the space that I had gotten permitted. A lot of money went into it, and we came up with nothing since there was no markets for commercial real estate rentals in that location. I learned that the hard way, and it was at that point that I realized that zoning in Central and other areas of Milton was actually the barrier to renewal and investment in what had ultimately become blighted areas. They weren't at the beginning, Central at the beginning was a vibrant business district when people worked a different way. There was a mercury dealership where steel and rye is, there was a police station where 36 Central is, and there was a Henry's Ice Cream Plant and a little restaurant where the new development's going in there. And everything else that was there was infill. And that created two dynamics that we're trying to recreate in Milton Village with the zoning right now. It created pedestrian traffic because there were workers who worked there, and there was a reason to come there. There were shops that drew people there. So you have people, and you have commerce, and you get a vibrant business area. And it worked until the car dealerships moved out to the highways, the shops moved- it worked until the car dealerships moved out to the highways, the shops moved out to the mall, Henry's closed and was blocked by Hood, and all of a sudden, you had an area that had lost its reason for existence. It was amazing to me, but less than a quarter of a mile, when I lived on Herrick Drive, I noticed that a quarter of a mile from what were really beautiful mansions and beautiful new homes, there were areas of the town that had not had substantial new investment in over 60 years. Ultimately, working with the neighborhood, the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen and other interested parties and citizens, Paul Sullivan and I were able to permit and build 36 Central Avenue. The new building at 36 Central, together with the changes in the zoning, created a process under which the building could be permitted, resulting in a real revitalization of the Central Ave Business District in a way that, at the time, we had tried to permit the office building. It may be obvious now, but it wasn't even envisioned by anybody. Had the office building been built, I believe that we would have continued to have an underutilized and untenable situation in what is now a vibrant and active commercial and pedestrian gathering area, which is the Central Business District. While having dinner at Steel &amp; Rye several years ago, I was told by the owner that it was the excitement created by the passage of the new mixed-use bylaw, together with the approval of a project at 36 Central Avenue, that was at the core of his decision to invest in the area and transform an old garage into one of the finest restaurants in the area. The project at 36 Central did not go unnoticed by the public either, as when completed, 36 Central won the Silver Award from the Boston Builders Association as the best mixed-use development in greater Boston in 2012. What's more important than the accolades that were earned... From the development of 36 Central and the renewal, it was the renewal of the area that brought Steel &amp; Rye, but what that building and Steel &amp; Rye did to enhance and increase the underlying property values, not only within the area of the planned unit development, but also within the surrounding neighborhood. When one looks around the neighborhoods, it's very easy to see that the increase in property values fueled investment in the area and allowed owners to borrow money that was used to upgrade and to invest in existing properties. This is one of the reasons I'm supporting the new mixed-use bylaw for Milton Village. While we call it a village, Milton Village is not a village. Currently, it is little more than a cutthroat through on the way to Boston or to Boston from the South Shore. There are few shops, as you could see from the slides, even fewer pedestrians. There's just not enough shops and the people in the area who live and work there to create the density that's sufficient to power economic growth and investment that we've seen in the Central Ave Business District. This is in contrast to Lower Mills just across the Deposit River, where density provides the fuel that allows the neighborhood to thrive. What makes a neighborhood vibrant and what turns a thoroughfare into a village is a community of people who live and interact together. You can see this illustrated throughout Europe and in many of the small towns and villages that are scattered throughout parts of the United States, Ireland, England, France, and all over Europe, where roads pass through villages where people live and interact. You can see that in suburban Boston, Concord, Lexington, Needham, Brookline, and Newton, where villages have stagnated due to how goods are sold and have caused commerce and other forms of economic activity having been moved first to the malls and then to the internet. Without changes in the zoning that allow people to move into the area, these business districts would suffer. And a good example of what's happened is if you go to Needham, where the center of Needham is just bustling with restaurants and activities, but what you'll see is lots of urban infill where people are communing together, where communities have either naturally allowed residential and commercial and retail to coexist, the benefits are apparent. In Cohasset, where I just finished a project and where mixed-use bylaw was passed in 2012, the downtown business district is thriving. Surrounding neighborhoods have also increased in value, creating an economic resurgence in Cohasset Village. The resurgence of Central Ave Business District is just another example of what can happen when the town looks forward rather than backward. What all of these examples have in common is that they've allowed more dense residential development within and surrounding the commercial districts. These areas also seem to follow mass transit infrastructure. In order to create vibrant commercial districts, you need to have people living within them. That's what mixed-use zoning accomplishes. In addition, mixed-use zoning increases the underlying value of properties, allowing owners to borrow against the new values to both build their new projects and to improve existing properties. This is a win-win for everyone. What I particularly like about the approach implicit in the current proposal is the flexibility it provides to allow each developable parcel to be developed, taking into account the unique characteristics of a particular site. The bonuses that are provided for in the bylaw give the planning board the ability to use incentives to further the public interest in a real and meaningful way. In the case of my property at 98 Adams Street, the proposal provides a mechanism to preserve and rebuild a structure that we've been trying to save since I purchased the property more than 20 years ago. A second thought, a second benefit of the new bylaw is not so obvious, but very important nonetheless. The new bylaw engages abutters and the community in a way that is at the core of the approval process. By creating a process that is inclusive, and to a certain extent, political, it gives all stakeholders a seat at the permitting table without fundamentally changing the balance of power. No project can be approved under this bylaw if it is not welcomed by the citizenry. This may irk those who wish to develop in Milton, but it ensures that no voice gets unheard in the process. Thank you for allowing me to make this presentation, and I will hand it over to Allison.
Thanks, Mike. The Planning Department has been involved in this very robust effort, and we are very excited to see the potential for this district in application. We are all very appreciative of the time and attention given by all of those who contributed to this effort, especially Cheryl, and are looking forward to some fantastic projects that will add value to and maintain the character of this district. If anyone has any questions, they can be directly emailed to me. My email is provided on one of the slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. At this time, I'm going to ask Michael Lynch to provide us with Joshua Wilde's statement, and I'm going to end my screen share.
My name is Joshua Wilde, and I'm the owner of the Web Mill in Milton Village. For those of you who aren't familiar with the building, it's one of the original Chocolate Factory buildings located on the corner of Adams and Elliot Street that is currently partially occupied by Milton Hill Sport and Spa. I'm also a resident of Milton and live near Cunningham Elementary School with my wife and two children. I'm here tonight to provide support for the new proposed overlay district, because I believe it will revitalize Milton Village by opening the door to potential uses that will incentivize the financial investment needed to transform and activate the assets of the village. My support is grounded on three large principles. The first is that the proposed overlay district is well-thought-out and has been properly vetted through discourse and outside opinions. As an attorney myself, I've dealt with zoning in multiple different municipalities, and very few that I have seen have taken this amount of time and resources to try to make a significant change and get it right. Second is although it may not be perfect, I do think there is a solid groundwork to encourage property owners to plan, and the overlay gives the planning board flexibility to cater their opinions to each unique site's conditions. That flexibility is needed, because there is no one-size-fits-all solution to zoning. The third is that I can say unequivocally that this overlay district will have a positive impact and improvement to the quality of our lives as Milton residents, because I am one of the property owners who will participate in the process and propose something substantive to make this worthwhile. On that note, I think it's important for me to share my vision from my specific property so you can understand the massive positive impact this overlay can have on the Milton community. The Web Mill site is unique in that it sits along the Nippon River. It has two pre-existing buildings, both with a large waterfront presence and direct access to the bike path. I'd like to activate that waterfront access and have some sort of outdoor seating venue that capitalizes on those unique features. I envision a live-work-play concept at the site, which would have a gym and ground-level offerings like a juice bar, coffee shop in the front building. Above those concepts in the front building would be a collaborative concept like a coworking space and residential units on the upper floors. In the rear, I'd like to see a concept like a dog-friendly brewery with outdoor seating and live music. Office space in this location is becoming less and less desirable, especially considering the pandemic. The current office and business rents do not support the financial investment needed to really bring Milton Village to life. By allowing residential units to be part of the planning, we are opening the door to what could be an amazing vibrant asset to the Milton community. If you'd like to see what I've described as part of your community, I encourage you to support the proposed overlay district as well. Thank you.
Okay, well, we've come to the end of our webinar, and I'd like to thank everyone who participated today, the panelists, the speakers, and to our former planning director, Bill Clark, for all of his work in preparing the zoning article. I'd like to thank all the Master Plan Committee members, the planning board members, and all the others who attended our meetings, providing valuable input and countless hours to work on this zoning and to vet it. Also, I'd like to thank the Affordable Housing Trust, the Housing Committee, and the Historical Commission, whose members have also provided valuable input and who all now support this overlay zoning. I'd also like to thank the Warrant Committee for their consideration of this zoning overlay, and they too have support the passing of this amendment. We hope that you will all join us in supporting this amendment at town meeting in July with your yes vote. And lastly, I'd like to thank Michael Lynch of Milton Access Television for hosting this webinar today and for hosting all of our meetings through this platform since we've had this pandemic. He's been wonderful to work with, and he's also going to be hosting a copy of this webinar on his website. He'll be sending us a link to it, and we will widely share it with everyone to view. Thank you all again.